To call this regular meeting of council to order. Uh for um May thirteen, two thousand twenty-four at seven oh two P M. I'd like to recognize that we're on thirty-five land, ancestral land, which is recently nation and homeland of the making. May I have an approval of the agenda?
Madam Mayor. I'll like to sign my written motion, receive resolution two, twenty, twenty-four, zero, one, three. Thank you.
Yeah, just yeah, go on to the next. Yeah. Thank you. Um, the approval of the agenda was Deputy Mayor Valentino, Councilor Lumber, all in favor. Like to mention that we have uh councillor Fitzpatrick and Oberdorfer on Zoom and city manager Anthony McGinnis. Next, we'll go to community comments and feedback.
Robert Chutby fifty-two, right? Um concerned, uh, I'm learning discussions going on yet about our budget and it's May already and. A lot of people like Louis going on with their money in the city and what's happening. Just, uh, you know, taxpayers are getting pinched here and we would like to know that the city is going to help us.
We've actually just made some dates for meeting on our budget reservation next week.
Thank you.
Or on the budget, thank you. Uh, any other comments?
Ron Mottetuck, twenty-odd Street. A few weeks back, I asked the question about a resolution to spend three hundred thousand dollars to look at some. Possible modifications for the aquatic center and I got a bit of an answer at the last meeting. From our manager that said it was, uh. It pertained to the H-back system. Now, I'd like to know what changes to the H-back system because H-back in a pool is very important as we know that's where shut down our Norplex. And secondly, for that three hundred thousand dollar expenditure, how much did we realize in savings with them modifications? Thank you.
Thank you, we will get that message information for this. Any other comments? Any feedback? Same now, we'll move into adoption minutes. Adoption minutes for the regular meeting of council, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Resolution two, zero, two, four, zero, six, one. Moved by Councilor Trump, moved by seconded by Councilor MacArthur. The result that the minutes of the regular council meeting held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba. On Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, he adopted a circular administration.
Nothing further.
Councilor Trump, any questions?
Oh, no further.
Oh, the question, all those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Did you have comments, sir?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, anyway. Just wondering, uh, we we do that every year for the water drop protection. I wonder, do we ever touch the three million dollars? Is that the the resolution about the, uh, right, right?
No, no, regular meeting. Adoption.
Oh, sorry, okay. I'm good, thank you.
Karen.
All those in favor for?
Oh, pardon?
Did you get a?
Deputy Mayor, did you have dinner?
Okay.
Just making sure we had voted that.
Yeah. Five point two is that is adoption minutes for committee of the whole May fifth. A six, two thousand twenty-four. Resolution two, zero, two, four, zero, six, two, moved by two. Seconded by Councilor Lumber. The result that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting. Of council held in council chamber, city of Thompson, Manitoba, Manitoba, on Monday, May sixth. Be adopted as circular administration. Councilor Trump is the mover.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Call for the question, all those in favor. Moving to resolutions. Resolution six point one is a resolution to approve the credit arrangement to C I B C. Resolution two, zero, two, four, zero, six, three, moved by Deputy Mayor Valentino, seconded by Councilor Lumber. Whereas section one seventy-three, one of the municipal act provides authority for municipality to borrow money by resolution. For operating expenses during a fiscal year, providing the amount. Moral does not exceed the amount collected in taxes. And grants in lieu of taxes for the previous fiscal year. Now therefore be it resolved that council authorized the credit arrangement of three million dollar overgraff. Between the city of Thompson and the C I B C. And be be it therefore result, all signs borrowed under the resolution will be supported. By a charge, a training, a charge upon the whole of the revenue of the city of Thompson. Lynn?
Thank you, this is housekeeping with the credit arrangements that we have at the C I B C currently. We have to um have this resolution endorsed every, every year in order for us to be able to access. When needed, the three million dollar overdraft. Um, it's more or less a housekeeping procedure. We have not in the last fiscal year, um, required to draw down on that overdraft. We kept the checking account in good standing so that it didn't get down to. The point where we would have to borrow on and. Check in very leastness.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, it's move, you have any comments?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor Smith. I think we say housekeeping, but it's something that annually we do as a resolution and. I think it offers a municipality a little bit of protection also. I mean, we lived through a pandemic where there was a fear that you might need something like this in place or. We see like the emergency situation, you know, just south of us, so it also gives you a level of protection, especially when you're. In between or not yet receiving your tax dollars, so I think this is good that we're allowed to do it and it provides us some protection and. I'll be supporting it, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? Councilor Wong?
Maybe, maybe, the reason I asked the question was I never seen the payment come off in the chair, it's just some sort of payment, that's why I noticed that. Probably we never used that, it's just for protection, we have to stay on that. Uh, my other question is, is it necessary just moving a C N B C? Should we negotiate the other bank and try and fish for a different rate?
That would, that would be a decision of council to have us going to a tender for our paying services.
Is it a yearly contract or is there a multiple years contract, can we do it the following year?
That would be something that we would talk about.
So it's, it's a yearly thing now?
No, it's not a year, it's. This three million dollars is an annual thing. We have a contract with the bank that if. Uh, that's what is on, but.
If you have a contract, we get a line of credit from the bank.
The line of credit is something that we have to approve. On an annual basis, the, if we wanted to do, uh, put something out to change banks to have, uh. Something different, then that would be something as a council as a whole, we have to have a meeting. Councilor Lumber?
It's not directly related to this, but we did discuss putting on a tender last term from. Uh, a different bank and after speaking to our administration. It was, you know, all our bankrupts would change and there was a number of different things that would have to happen. That kind of wasn't considered efficient. We didn't think we had that much of a difference, a different bank, but I'd be, we'll see what they have to say then, if that's a question. Um, but I'll be supporting this, we will that funding, uh, as we know, we won't get our taxes until September to. Get by it till eleven, if we be. Or if we have problems with the well cards or some other kind of emergency, thanks.
Thank you, any? Same now, I'll hope for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Karen? Six point two is a resolution authorizing administration to request provincial approval for an extension on the financial plan then. Resolution two, zero, two, four, zero, six, four, moved by Deputy Mayor Valentino, seconded by Councilor Trump. Whereas subsection one sixty-two, one of the Manitoba Municipal Act requires council. To adopt a financial plan for each year. And whereas subsection one sixty-two, four requires a signed copy of the plan to be filed. With the minister by May fifteenth of that. Year in a form approved by the minister. And whereas section three oh four requires municipality to pass a tax levy bylaw by May fifteenth. And file a copy with the minister by June fifteenth. And whereas due to a shortage of staff in the finance department. The timelines will not be able to be met, now therefore be it result that. Council authorized administration to submit a letter to the Minister of Municipal Relations requesting. The extension of the deadline to submit financial plans from May fifteenth to June fourteen, twenty twenty-four. Administration.
Thank you, um, Mayor Smith. The, uh, I included a memo on the agenda this evening to explain some of the reasons why we are. Continue to be behind in the finance, uh, least of all is the, um. Lack of staffing in, in a couple of our major areas, so that those being the. Tasker can be. Payable there. Um, so that's greatly impacted on the rest of the, the rest of the staff here and. Also myself and our assistant with getting the current tax sale information. Processed and, and trying to assist with going and paying off their taxes even I even kind of. Or directing them to financial institutions, um. Yeah, it's actually quite soon, most of our dates are the last three weeks. And the annual addition to taxes or any utilities has also taken most of the last time, so. That put me further behind in, in getting that that's necessary for council to, to deliver a long budget, so. Respectfully ask for discussion.
Thank you. Comments? Uh, first, we'll walk to Deputy Mayor Valentino, let's move her.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor Smith, I mean, obviously, I'm going to be supporting this and I, I think that we've kind of been. Um, updated a little bit along the way through this process. Also, I think it's worth noting that we did patiently wait for that funding letter, letter for the aquatic facility, which. Held up also the capital budget and what our plans were going to be. Um, that project, so that was a component also. And, um, I, I appreciate this and absolutely, and I think council has come to some times that are going to work with them now that we can. Finish this up and get it in, so I'm fine with it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, question, is that going to, do we have enough time to do the first, second, third reading and the public consultation?
Yeah, I do believe, yes, sir. Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Trump?
Uh, I think, uh, Councilor Wong had answered my question there.
We'll definitely have a public consultation.
Thanks.
That will call for the question, all those in favor. Uh, six point three is a resolution to set the date for sitting at Thompson School of District and Mystery League by lunch. Resolution two, zero, four, zero, six, five, moved by Councilor MacArthur, seconded by Councilor Trump. Whereas section one oh five, one of the municipal act states that. Subject to section one oh two vacancy after election. A council must hold a by-election. Fill a vacancy on the council as soon as reasonably. Reasonably possibly possible unless. A, vacancy occurs in the six months before the next general election or. B, the vacancy occurs in the twelve months before the next provincial ac- election. And the remaining members are the majority of members comprising the council and. C decides not to hold an election. And whereas by-election is required to fill the vacancy left in the Thompson Council. And the school district mystery late, now therefore be it resolved that co- council sets September the tenth, two thousand twenty-four as the by-election date. Anthony?
Thank you, worship, so as was noted in the memo, um, former councillor Earl Colburn resigned on April twenty-nine.
Let's see, we don't hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear everyone else, you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. I can.
Yeah.
So just they can't hear us, I guess.
He can't talk. Hey, Lynn, uh. Lynn, would you like to explain this? Which one?
What one? Can they hear each other? One, it's the owl. Yeah, yeah, well. Probably don't see my list. You guys, or us, can you hear each other? So they can hear each other, it's got to be the owl. We're like going through the speakers of the owl. Is there a volume to wait on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I call, we'll group backups. Hello. Hello, Craig, yeah, now?
You can hear you guys, we can hear all of you.
Now, we can hear you, we just turned up the volume on the all.
I fixed it.
Hey, Anthony, would you like to explain about the election?
It was really simple, you just have to pass a resolution to have a by-election.
Right on.
Okay.
Well, of course, it's the big something.
Councilor MacArthur, so move for, do you have anything to say?
I think you're, you're, Madam Mayor, any other comments? I do, oh, you do, yeah. Um, I just want to say that there's a by-election, now is the time to run, now is the time to speak. Time to get your, um, behind in here and run. You know, instead of putting it on, uh, social media, this is the time. Now you put your name into vote, coming around, that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilor Trump?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. When, when is going to be your nomination, like, date for nomination?
Uh, actually, I have a copy of the things, it'll be in July. I have, if you come after, I've got a copy on my desk of the. The time, the timeline.
So sometimes.
Maybe can we consider, do you have that timeline that I have, or is it not? Well, no, I could send it over.
We will, the city will publish all this onto a website, so we'll develop a, an election website and it'll outlet, it'll layout all the times. So that's, uh, once this resolution is passed, I believe Ian's are, he's been working on that. And then everything will be laid out for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Any other questions? Same now, call for the question, all those in favor. Next, we're going to six point four, a resolution. Authorizing the chief financial officer to open a trust account for the Thompson area pet care and community. Service cooperative. Resolution two, zero, two, four, zero, six, six, moved by Councilor Lundberg, seconded by Councilor MacArthur. Whereas the Thompson and area pet care community service cooperative has approached the city of Thompson to open a trust account for them. Now therefore be it resolved that council authorized a chief financial officer to open a trust account. At the C I B C for the Thompson and area pet care community service cooperative, Councilor Lundberg. Well, first, administration, sorry, let's go to Lynn.
Thank you, uh, we dealt with this at the committee of the whole last week, um, uh. This is to assist the group with, um, um. Purchasing the building that currently is occupied by the public debt. And, um, and also gather funds enough to be able to bring, uh, temporary events to town to. Fill in where, when after Dr. Carey leaves the community, so, um. So it's a formality to improve the trust account being established so they can start with their finances.
Yeah. Councilor Lundberg is the mover?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'll be supporting this, you know, from the beginning that, uh, when we lost our vegetarian before. And when there was an issue with being, uh, Dr. Carey stayed. Uh, there was meetings held by. Uppers, concerned citizens, um, came up with the idea of, you're cooperative to try and. Ensure that there is best services for Manitoba. And, uh, thank them for the work they've done so far. Love that we can help them.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Wong?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say the. Quite a bit of a word for the administration to look after all this costs.
It's additional work, yes, um, but it's, it's, it's. Most of the trust accounts that are established are, are benefit to the city and, um. Would ameliorate some of the costs that the, that the taxpayers in general not to pay, getting we weren't doing any services, so. Since it's been some work that's worth it.
I, I personally, I will support this resolution, but I just worry about, because right now. We should have stopped based on the earlier resolution from the finance department. So if we keep adding those, they're going to cost them more time and. That's only concern I have, other than that, I don't have some early noise.
Thank you. Any other comments? Same now, call for the question, all those in favor. Six point five is a res- resolution authorizing administration develop a cost sharing agreement with Water Services Board for political development. Resolution two, zero, two, four, zero, six, seven, moved by Councilor Lundberg, seconded by Councilor MacArthur. The result that council authorized administration. To develop a cost sharing agreement with Manitoba Water Services Board for political development administration law.
Yes, good evening, uh, this was discussed in the committee of the whole meeting last week. Uh, this, uh, we've had a discussion about the Water Services Board on the utilities, so water, wastewater, lagerage. And, uh, their, their recommendation was to, uh, as we don't have an engineer on staff, hire a consulting engineer. To ensure that, uh, you know, the city's interests are protected with the new development area that we're not going to. Uh, short ourselves on water or wastewater treatment. Uh, man, the water services were, I would prefer to say that this would be eligible under cost sharing agreement with them. And, uh, in order to start the process to develop an agreement, we need the resolution of council tonight. Once the cost sharing agreement is developed with, with, with dollar figures and all that, it will come back to council again for a further resolution. So this, remember, the Water Services Board is kind of a two-step process, the resolution to start and then the resolution to approve, so this is the resolution to start.
Thank you. Councilor Lundberg, it's the mover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we supporting this, uh, we've done work with natural water services for a number of times. And with their expertise and, uh, working with different contractors and. Insurance crews is invaluable, we're not, uh, doing all of the resources ourselves. And, and, um. With all the capital projects we have in mind right now, I think it's important to make sure we have their expertise there. To make sure things being done efficiently and correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments, questions? Councilor Trump?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I asked a question in the committee before about. Our water treatment plant and of course our sewage treatment plant. The sewage treatment plant possibly is not capacity to offer this development. But the water treatment plant, uh, according to what I heard from our T E O. Mentioned that we possibly have enough capacity to supply water to this new development. But, so you think the Water Service Board is going to look into this, like this question?
And that's the whole purpose of hiring an engineering consultant, is to help look at those state like capacities on both plants. And look at the demand for the subdivision and ensure that, yes, we have adequate supply and adequate treatment at the end. So that's what we will be using this, this engineering from this one. Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other comments? Same now, call for the question, all those in favor. Karen? Six point six is a resolution to approve early capital to purchase the fitness center card access system. Resolution two, zero, two, four, zero, six, eight, moved by Deputy Mayor Valentino, seconded by Councilor Trump. Where the T R T C Fitness Center uses a card access system. Which allows paid members to access the gym during regular business hours. And whereas it has been determined that the printer is failing and needs to be replaced. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved the early capital purchase of the T R T C. Fitness Center Card Access System for a total of eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. And it further resolved that the fund, funding of the allocated from the two thousand twenty-four small capital fund.
Tonya? The, uh, the card access system, um, is something that is needed at the T R C C, it allows the individuals who have membership. Uh, for the facility to access, um, through the doors because the doors are locked, um. Right now, the system actually is failed, so it's not in use right now, uh, so our staff had to, uh, get up from their desks. From the main desk downstairs, walk up, down, walk the door for every patron that uses the facility. Um, so you need a resolution pass to, uh, to get a new system and it will be a different system, so we will not have a Maylock system anymore, so we can, we're not requiring that. Um, it's a Bob type system, um, which is, uh. I guess an advanced system, what we currently have, which, uh, which we do for that facility and as well as we move into, um, the future of maybe changing some doors outside of the, uh, the building. We can have that bomb access as well.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Valentino, is mover, do you have a comment?
No, thank you, Madam Smith, I'll be supporting this, I mean, the system's failed, we have to get something in place, so, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? Councilor MacArthur?
I did research on how.
I did research on how much it costs. It's it's way lower than this with the other programmer company that I spoke to and um like it is better that's uh what is it? Four hundred fobs they bought. It cost them like four thousand dollars. So I'm not sure what and it's where with their program, same thing. They know who's coming in and that's which fault. When they come and go, but with the amount, this isn't quite different, different in the amount. I'm not sure, but I can.
All that.
So this this package is uh two new readers, so two actual electronic readers that we install on both floors. Five hundred of the cards, the printer, the installation and programming of our software. So it'll do the same thing, counselor. So if the card is given to Sonia with her name on the card of the system, if she swipes in, then we record in the system. Since Sonia swiped into the gym at seven twenty nine P M tonight. Um so it's two procs readers, the printer, five hundred cards. The 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 installation and programming on our computer system to do that, as well as the tr- the travel from one to pay. Because the company is located on the page, so they have to pay all the travel and the compensation.
But there's a way that we use an entire card box.
It's it's cards because we use the cards of membership. So it has their names and and pictures printed on it to verify that, yes, it's it's Sonia that's using their card. We can't we can't respond.
And that is okay. You can't?
No, because we can't put pictures on the box. And that's how we track people, right? We track by there was no this Sonia's picture on the card as you point.
But that's I mean with my fault because I have two boxes. I'm using a different faces. My name shows up on Mary's system that I.
Go ahead. The name will show up, but there's no way to verify unless.
That's I mean, that's like with my, like my picture shows up and everything because that's how I registered. And then when I'm there, it's where I'm.
It verifies on the computer, but nobody can go up to you and verify that you're actually holding your phone because you don't picture your phone. But we can go up to the user in the gym and say, let me see your card and verify that, yes, the picture on the card is actually you. So that people aren't giving their phones to everyone else.
Not sharing.
To use.
And and also uh the ones that you're looking at, is that, you know, completely installed? Because like, as I say, these are installed, pay all the transportation costs for the people to get up here and check it out. Any other comment? Pastor Wall. Oh, sorry. Pastor Overdrummer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I was just gonna add um as well, um because we're still talking about swiping. It's not actually a swipe card. It's still a tap just like a fob is. Um but it's a card with your picture on it, but you just tap it just like you do with a fob. The government has been using it for years for all of their buildings and they don't have any issues with them. Um any provincial government building that you um if you're a government employee for the province, that's what you use is an I D card that shows your photo. Um essentially the same idea, right? So that they can verify that you're supposed to have access to the building. Um just because the number of people that are employees that they're dealing with, um it's not possible for security to know every single person, right? And whether or not they're they should have access. Um so I don't have any issues or concerns with um with that part of it. Um definitely uh we'll be supporting this. Um I think uh if that system that Councilman MacIver is talking about is cheaper, I mean, I think that's worth checking out. But again, um as administration mentioned, this does include um all the installation and everything. So I'm not clear on whether um what Councilman MacIver was talking, what includes installation, trans- um like transportation and all of that stuff. Um and then I guess I would also just be curious about whether or not it's compatible. Um I know there was comments made at our meeting last week at committee of the whole about how this system is compatible with what we have existing, I believe. So um I don't know if that um would make any difference either in terms of cost or anything, but I would just be curious to know those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Saying that, call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed? Very. Oh, two reasons. Let me share. You're both. Six point seven is a resolution to approve early capital purchases for the Thompson fire and emergency service kitchen renovation. Resolution two zero two four zero six nine moved by Deputy Mayor Valentin, second by Councilor Lumber. Resolution two zero two four zero six nine, whereas inspection of the fire hall kitchen and eating area was conducted and safety concerns were brought forward as well as the overall condition of the kitchen. And whereas the fire hall kitchen will have to be renovated to address the safety concerns. Now therefore be it result, the council approved the fire hall removal of a renovation that a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty six cents. And be it further result that the funding from two thousand twenty four small capital be allowed allocated for the project with the offset coming from the building reserve administration. So.
So earlier this year, there was some safety concerns that were brought forward regarding the kitchen at the uh the fire hall. The kitchen is used on a daily basis because there are twenty more um attachment um that is used by almost half of the first. So um we need a resolution to uh to hold it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Valentin is mover.
Um I'll be supporting this. It's well needed for them downstairs for how busy they are. So whatever we can do. Thank you.
Other counselors? Uh yeah, definitely. It's time for a bit of an upgrade and thirteen thousand dollars is a very small price to have uh safety issues addressed downstairs. With that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed?
Well, I agree. I say I agree. Please work.
Just before I close, I'd like to acknowledge that our neighbors uh uh to the west and font and Frandery Portage are have some very serious fires going on there. And I have reached out uh to both communities uh to let them know that we're here to help them. I would like to acknowledge that uh when they reached out to the city of Thompson, while we ourselves uh did not help. Uh Valet has sent a truck and five, approved five to Flint Pond to help with where they're ever they're needed there. So let's just thank those to that. Let me just, anybody that knows anybody in in Flint Pond and that, like communications and that are down and everything. People I talked to there uh this morning were still using a sat phone. And that so uh definitely uh stay abreast and uh thank you to the pod and further points of the escaping the vacancies from the Flint, from Flint Pond and Frandery Portage. With that being said, I'll call for a jury. Councilor Lumber, Councilor Wong, all in favor.